All right, I'll call this May 23rd, 2022, Sylvania Board of Education meeting to order. Cajun, we call roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Here.
Mrs. Conklin is not here. Mrs. LaVele?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here. All right, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Motley, we are with you.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. Good evening, everyone. Wanting to share some highlights over the last week or so that I think are interesting and important, especially during this time of year. We all have such an opportunity to celebrate our students and a number of the activities that they are participating in, as well as the number of accolades that they are receiving. This morning, I actually had the pleasure of joining Ms. Hoffman, Ms. Conklin, and Mr. Feller as we were at Timberstone Junior High, and we were judging the science fair of a number of our junior high students, and it was really a lot of fun. They were so poised and nervous, but they really could explain their hypotheses and the problem and how they went through the whole experiment. That was quite fun. Also, following my trip over to Timberstone, I went to Arbor Hills and walked through their second annual Egyptian Museum, which was also quite intriguing. All the projects that the students did, there were replicas of mummies, there were replicas of pyramids, one made out of Rice Krispie Treats, which was quite clever, I thought, but just a number of things about Egypt and the pyramids and the queens and the pharaohs and everything during that time. One also unique piece is that the children had a choice on how they wanted to present their research and their learning, and one group of kiddos actually did a kind of like a news story on when the Nile is about to flood and run for high water and what this means, and it was just really interactive and engaging. So I'm very thankful to have the opportunity to see what our students are doing, especially at the end of the year. Our teachers work so hard to keep our kids engaged in relevant opportunities, so that was just a great time. Last week, many of us attended the senior award ceremonies both at Northview and Southview. It was nice to see not only our families out, but our colleagues, employees, including Amy Addington, whose daughter is graduating this year from Southview High School. Also, we are continuing as a district to further and strengthen our community partnerships. Over the course of the last week, I've had the opportunity to meet with Lord's, their athletic director, Mrs. Janet Eaton-Smith, to talk about our ongoing relationship in regards to our facilities. On Friday, we met with the ProMedica Sports Medicine Group, who also oversees our athletic training at Northview. We also had a connection with Mercy Hospitals in regards to career education and also expanding that relationship in regards to some other things that we have in the hopper. So it's really good work when our teams can get together and really strengthen and expand our community partnerships for the benefit of our students, not only short term, but long term. Something that's an interesting little tidbit coming up, it's not often that a previous superintendent has the opportunity to sit down with a current superintendent. Later on next month, I will participate in the Inside the Arena podcast with Dr. Brad Rieger. I'm excited to do that and have a dialogue, and it'll be my first podcast, so it's gonna be kind of cool that he invited me to participate. We also, as the last week of school for many of us, but also nearing the end of the school year, we will have a superintendence meeting for all Lucas County superintendents. We try to continue and collaborate not only throughout the course of the school year, but even at the end of the school year, throughout the school year, and going through the summer months as we prepare. That meeting will be hosted by Anthony Wayne's School District this week, and on Friday, an exciting time and a transition of sorts, we will celebrate our Sylvania Schools retirees. We will hold a luncheon. It is an annual luncheon, and that will be held in Sylvania, and we will celebrate our educators and our support staff who have been with our district for a part of their career and/or for some of them, their entire career. So we will have a luncheon this Friday. Summer Swing, our intervention program, is just around the corner. And on a final note, Mr. Jim Walpert, who is the Director of Transportation, who provided a presentation a few months ago, is continuing to reach out and cultivate relationships and talk to our community partners. More specifically, today, he met with our private school principals to talk about the transportation plan and the implications that may be coming up for our private school students and how we will work together to make sure that we have consistent and reliable transportation for all Sylvania students, albeit they attend a public school or a private school. And that's the end of my superintendent's report, Mr. Feller.
Great, thank you. Next, for commendations?
Yes, sir. We have recognition of achievement. Congratulations to Reagan Whitrock, who was chosen as an exhibitor for the 42nd Annual Young People's Art Exhibition, rather, sponsored by the Ohio Art Education Association. Reagan is a McCord Junior High student, so congratulations. Another talented student being recognized for what they bring to Sylvania Schools. So congratulations to Reagan.
Do we approve that, right?
Yes.
Yes, we need a motion.
I'm going to approve.
One second.
All right, any discussion? Call roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin? Mrs. Conklin, sorry.
She's not here.
She's not here?
So she's not gonna answer.
Mrs. LaVele?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now we're at the first opportunity for public participation for agenda items, and seeing none, now we're at the treasurer's report.
Okay, very exciting time for the treasurer. This is our chance to speak in front of the board about the five-year forecast. We get these two opportunities a year, so I would like to first start by apologizing to everybody in the room. We have to talk a little bit about school finance. But before we go any further, I'm gonna ask the board to, and actually those in the audience as well, if you could take out your smartphones. We're gonna take just a short quiz.
Uh-oh, there's a test. Now we told you there was a test.
A quiz, right up there.
So if you guys could open up your like internet browser, Safari, whatever you may have, and you're going to go to Kahoot.it and enter this PIN, and Kahoot is K-A-H-O-O-T, and you're gonna enter that PIN there, 288-8354, and just enter your name, or if you would like to remain anonymous, enter an appropriate anonymous name.
I put Tim's name and it shows him already.
There you go.
I gotta be Kim.
I gotta log in.
Okay, so thanks to...
Oh, I just wanna play.
Yeah, Kahoot.it. You shouldn't have to log in. Yep, just enter the game PIN when it comes up. And if you need any help, just let me know.
And you will look like the foolish one if you need help. That's probably me. Let's know. Nickname Veronica.
It's a short quiz. It's only six questions. We'll give it like 10 more seconds and we'll get rolling.
Not Tim Z.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. So the first question of the evening is, what is the name of the new school funding formula in Ohio? Is it Red or A there? The Patterson Funding Plan, the Fair School Funding Plan, the Less Is More Funding Plan? Or did we really get a new school funding formula?
He's looking at my phone.
And these are times, so you guys have just a couple seconds to answer each one. Okay, so, okay, most everyone got that correct?
Julie, it's not great.
So there's our leaderboard so far. Mr. Feller? Question two, what could we have purchased if fuel prices remain low this year? Two brand-new school buses. We could have driven to Alaska 89 times. New curriculum adoption, or D, all of the above? So D is correct. Our fuel costs are actually up year-to-date about $212,000, which would equal all of those, you know, forgive me on the mile per gallon on the trip to Alaska, so.
Yeah, not a school bus.
Right, right, right. Okay, we have a new leader. We have a new leaderboard here. So, okay, what did medical insurance costs come in at overall? This is a percent increase this year. 10% increase, 8%, 0%, or did it actually go down 2%? So one of those four. So this is, I'm gonna stop some people here.
Dang, I don't know.
It says not connected.
I got that wrong.
Okay, so four is actually the correct answer. We have had great years with our premiums.
All right, Nathan Lee.
Certainly, we don't know if that's gonna continue into the future, but... Four or five. Okay, so what is the amount of school dollars that are now being direct-funded by Ohio to our community school students that Sylvania Public School used to pay? So is it $2 million, $500,000, $3 million, or $750,000? Again, this was a switch in the Fair School Funding Plan that now the state is paying for any charter community private school students. The answer is $2 million. That's correct. So $3 million would actually be if you counted all the open enrollment students out as well. So that's just money that we get the kids from. That's kind of a trick. That's kind of a... Okay, so...
Sorry, Nathan.
You have a new leader here. Five or six, just two more. What is our district valuation? So if you took every home, public utility, parcel, things like that, and you have our, added up the value of our school district, what would it be? And this is the taxable value. Is it 100 million, 1 billion, 400 million, or 1.7 billion?
I'm just spinning now.
Right?
I keep getting kicked off.
All right, my streak is lost. I got that one wrong.
So the answer is 1.7 billion, and this is actually up 11.8% over last year. Final question, probably the most important question of the evening. Who is a GFO? Is it Adam Koch, Jeffrey Dornbusch, Cajun Keaton yours truly, or Mickey Mouse? So this is kind of a trick one, I'm gonna be honest.
Wow.
I'm not gonna answer that.
Listen, this is a self-esteem killer right here. We call this year.
Cajun, I got you.
I did the same.
Okay, perfect. Okay, now the answer was Adam. You know, he's a little green, but he'll get there. He'll get there. All right, so here's our winner this evening, and thanks to Dr. Motley. We have a small prize for the winner. I don't know who it's gonna be. It's not Julie, it's not Greg.
Nathan! Nathan, do you even know who Adam is? That's cheating.
So, okay, so that's just a quick little thing, just to get our brains going on the forecast, but I cast out just sort of a brief presentation for everybody. I just wanted to go through. So we'll get right into the second slide here, the second page. See actual numbers, always a part of a forecast. So highlighted in green are total revenues going out for the next five years and current year. Obviously, in red is our total expenditures, and then light blue is, are we surplusing money or are we deficit spending, right? So those are the three lines that we'll kind of focus on as we go through this. I just wanted to kind of draw the board's attention to those. The main revenue drivers for Sylvania and actually for many districts, we have real estate, and we have ODE funding, and our home set rollback or reimbursements that the state provides. So just wanted to point out what's really driving our revenue here in the district. It's really those three items. For our revenues, I talked a little bit about our district valuation. We'll get to that just the next page. But going out, again, not really knowing what's going on in this kind of crazy economy we're in right now, we remain kind of conservative with our real estate growth at 1.5%. And I want to pause. This forecast was kind of a collective forecast with Adam, Jeff, and I spent a lot of time working together on it, so all three of us feel pretty comfortable in these numbers should the board approve or have any questions. So ODE funding, we saw obviously some big changes in the way where our students are funded. You know, last year, EMIS data didn't really matter a whole lot because our funding, as far as funding goes, because it was tied to, it was locked in basically, so now it matters. So we want to make sure we're getting every kid counted, which again, that continues to be a good partnership between EMIS Foundation and Treasurers. I think that's around the state needs to happen. And then a big change in prior years, we advanced money, and what that kind of does is it artificially inflates our revenue and our expenses. Going forward, the three of us agree that maybe we will not do that, and actually that'll kind of give us a more true look at what our revenue and expenses are really coming in at. A lot of districts do that because of grants, things like that. Revenue on the real estate side breakdown, again, we had a pretty significant increase this year, as many districts saw across the state, especially with those updates. Valleys were up. You purchased or sold a home, you know that. So certainly, that comes on to the districts and all taxing agencies as well. Now, our total revenue was not up 11.8%. Just to make that clear, revenue was up about 5.7% on the real estate side. And then a three-year average or historical average is about 2.74%. Again, we're pretty conservative going out on these numbers, just kind of know where the economy is. And real quick, you could just see on the fiscal year-over-year how we're doing total revenue and kind of where our revenue is coming from. Please stop me with any questions, guys, as we go through this. Fair School Funding Plan in Ohio, I just wanted to point out, again, our revenues are gonna be down, our expenses are going to be down. Fortunately, the expenses are down more than the revenues, so Sylvania's coming out, coming out net head. So that's always really important to point out there that that's gonna cause our revenues to reduce, but also our expenses.
How many years is that locked in?
Two. And so we have a lot of work to do at the state level because, you know, it's a six-year fully face-in plan, and there's part of the General Assembly that feel that there's maybe a better way to fund schools than this, so we're just kind of hanging on tight, and we're gonna advocate as best we can because, you know, this plan is actually an increase versus other years. We didn't see that, right? So, yeah, so two years. Next year will be the last year, and then budget season. Okay, now the expense side, I wanted to point out the salary history here in the red bar graphs there. So over the past seven years, our average growth has been about 2.63% salaries. You can see where we are coming in FY '22. We had a large increase in actually in our, you know, overtime and then our subs cost. Obviously, coming off a year where maybe it wasn't exceptional, so that made a big difference in what we're paying our subs and having to get people in and even finding people. So having to cover that overtime and things like that. But if you were able to take, if that was not in, that increase wasn't in there, we truly did about a 2.79% increase just with negotiating agreements and steps and things like that.
But then how does that change with all the new positions we're adding, like administratively?
So we did forecast that going out. We did factor in some of that, understanding that some of that's going to be dedicated to ESSER, I believe, or at least a small portion for maybe the first couple of years we're not there. 100%, but we factored in a quarter percent of total salaries into any new positions. But hopefully have some wiggle room with not having as much sub cost going into next year and overtime cost going into next year. So we definitely kept that in mind when we were looking at this forecast, knowing that it was a, you know, a want and a need for the district. So that's in there. Long story short, that's in there. So I should have just said that. Salaries benefits, again, talk a little bit of salaries and benefits. You know, going forward, we really do feel our medical insurance premiums are going to increase. Districts all over the state are really seeing that. You know, traveling nurses in some areas are making $180 an hour. Eventually, that, someone's gotta pay that bill, so we think medical inflation is gonna be higher than normal. Purchase services are down 35%, and that's directly related to the Fair School Funding Formula. Supplies, we know inflation's here. We talked about, you know, copier paper and fuel, and I can go on and on and on. I mean, it's here, and so we understand that that's gonna affect our budget. True days cash, again, if this is a new measure for the board, it's just, you know, if we took in no new revenue, how many days can we operate? It's a pretty good measure, I think, to see physically where we're standing going out. Salaries and benefits as a percent of overall revenue, I just think this is also a good measure. Like, we're a people business, so of course our salaries and benefits are going to be the main driver of our expenses. But if it gets too high, obviously, then that's less services that we can provide, less supplies we can buy, and things like that. So we definitely, this is a number we really like to kind of hone in on and focus in on how we're looking going forward.
So you say if it gets too high. So physically, you're 21 at 79%, and if you're looking out five years, it's 90%.
Correct, correct. And really, what we have there, again, we forecasted our revenues going out 1.5% on our real estate. We feel that's pretty conservative. So the goal is and the hope is that as we go out, that we never hit this mark. We continue to look at it, and how can we, you know, back that down? Because as the revenues go up, this percentage is gonna fall. So we're hoping we found a little better on real estate, but we have time. I mean, we have five years out to be able to analyze this number.
Right, but I guess that's a little frustrating for me. Like, you're saying, well, we're hoping it's this, or hoping it's that, but this is what's in front of us to approve, right?
Correct, correct. I mean, we do have some, you know, potentially some new positions, historical increases. I mean, we didn't build in like a 5% base increase or anything like that for the forecast. Another important thing to note, we don't have any ESSER money in here in the forecast, and we do have just over $4 million available. So should the board choose to, we can offset some expenses in the short term with ESSER dollars. That's been kind of common, but...
No, no, good with offsetting some of the costs, but this is more of, right, this is more of a long term. That doesn't necessarily help us in, you know, in this forecast.
2026.
Yeah, we're at 90%.
Totally get it. And actually, this might help with that, potentially not this next slide.
I'm not gonna get happy yet, because Cajun, I'm not feeling happy right now.
No, I think we'll get there, though. So really, at the end of the day, we want to be realistic, but at the same time, you know, seeing what the trends are in other districts, certainly in Sylvania. But this year, we're rocking. I mean, we're having a great year. There are some things that with the transfer and the advance that we do, that's not gonna show up on the revenue side or the expense side going forward. So we are gonna see a reduction in what we actually surplus next year. But as you see, when we get out, assuming the same salary projections that we're looking at, that does put it in that situation. Similar, though, in the November forecast, honestly, if you would look at 80% or 90% of the schools in Ohio, you'd see a very similar trend. Typically, years four and five, you start to get into deficit spending because, at the end of the day, going back to what Mrs. LaVele said, we have to forecast the five-year forecast in the state only. You see the vast, a large majority of our funds come from the state of Ohio, and we just don't have, we just don't know what's going to happen with that. Certainly, we have 1.5% increases built in for ODE funding overall, but it should be more, in my opinion.
But it could be less.
It could be. Well, it could be less, absolutely. It could be less.
Right, should be, but could be.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the minute is, if the minute is less, I would recommend Adam to revise the forecast and bring it to the board immediately, right, in the minute that gets passed along, because that's a big deal if you reduce that sort of funding stream.
Is this forecast assuming renewal of the Fair School Funding Act beyond 2024?
It is. Well, yes and no, I would say, because I believe there are going to be changes. I think that the state's gonna look at a number of, I think there's gonna have to be a tweak to open enrollment. So it's really, you know, next year, we're projected about a $300,000 increase in Fair School Funding. That is in there. But going out after that, it's more of a $100,000 increase, because at the end of the day, I think overall, there's not going to be a, there's not going to be a large...
It looks like the numbers are pretty comparable going, like, kind of presumes that it's basically gonna stay in place. So if, I know we did better under the Fair School Funding Act than under previous plans, so if we were to lose this Fair School Funding Act, do you have any sense of how much?
Money we would actually lose?
Yeah.
So it's a great question. Northeast Ohio in general, we're losing a lot of kids. Sylvania is now losing them, right, at the same pace as some other districts, and that's where I think the General Assembly in general, and this is just my opinion, I think they're going to come after those school districts first, because with the theory of if you have less kids, should you receive less money? And districts that are growing, they should receive more money, right? I mean, it's a general, yeah, right, right. And so even though districts have been losing kids, we were still held harmless on guarantees. So, and the ODE has a long history of guarantees in the state. Prior to the Fair School Funding Plan, over 400 schools were on the guarantee, and even today, there's over 160, I believe, that are on the guarantee, which means we're getting more money, right, than we probably should be. So the state doesn't have a history of pulling a district backwards, if that makes sense financially.
Okay.
Not saying it couldn't happen. I mean, not saying that at all.
Yeah, it's kind of scary.
But, I mean, that's, I'll be honest, that's probably the hardest part of any treasurer's. Look, we have to have a crystal ball for five years, and really, we know what's going on for two. And I'll be honest, in this market, I mean, we just, real estate, should I be forecasting 11% growth in real estate, right? I mean, the market's been so hot, but probably not, because there's probably gonna be a pullback, and that's what we're starting to see, things like that. So... But the last one, I think, is the overall picture. I think this is important. Cash, I wanted to just focus on, oh, I'm sorry, one more slide.
Oh, the very last one.
Oh, yeah, the very, very last one. Thank you. The overall picture is, at the end of the day, what we have in cash today, based on the forecast, is going to grow in the next five years, five years out. We're gonna be plus $2 million where we're at today, given the assumptions from the forecast. So that's the important piece for me, anyway. Certainly, as we continue to see what's coming down the pike in different things like Fair School Funding and enrollments and things like that, tweaks can be made and adjusted, but...
Cajun, the salaries, benefits, this whole bar graph? Does that consist of most districts, five years out, seeing an increase because of the changes in state STRS, where teachers have to stay 35 years now, we're administrators for that back, where it used to be 30, and now?
Great, great.
We're paying people to top the pay scale for five years because of the changes in STRS, which is gonna have an impact, right by saying that?
Yeah, that's 100% correct. Thanks for bringing that up. I mean, if you're a teacher getting hired at 22-years-old, you're gonna work for 40 years teaching. I was a teacher and only jumping out for five. I don't know how you, but... But in all seriousness, that is dead on Tim, because, so that is pretty typical, because I'll admit, you know, as we continue on the forecast, I mean, we're conservative in nature. Treasurers are conservative in nature. We don't, we don't wanna, the last thing we want to do is come in worse than what's on the forecast. But again, five years out, it's really, it's just hard to really know and understand. But that, to Tim's point, most districts would have a pretty similar outlook on salaries and benefits going out five years.
Jumping, you mean between, jumping 11% between 21 and 26?
Honestly, potentially more today, only because, you know, we, like many other districts, we didn't write off, we didn't take all of our ESSER funds or necessarily all of our wellness dollars. That's what a lot of districts are fighting now. Their expenses this year are actually going up 11% this year, because last year, maybe they wrote off a million dollars with their wellness dollars or with ESSER funds and existing salaries. So now they're seeing that. So now they're seeing that, those jumps now. It's just kind of one of those different fund-to-fund type things, but at the end of the day, got to come back on the forecast if you wrote off in the past. But to your point, Julie, I mean, that's something that we need to continue to do. If we get near two or three, every six months, basically, we're going to come to the board with a forecast, and if that 90s, if we're, that 90s getting closer and closer, okay, now we've got some real things to look at in the future going out. So, certainly, we like it around the 80 there, so. And that's, I mean, that's good. I mean, I don't want to misinterpret, I mean, that's a good, and basically, you know, where you're at with your purchase services and things like that, obviously, if you, if a district has more in purchase services, that's not going to be on the salary benefit lines, let me scoot out a little bit. But any other, any other questions here? All right.
Thank you, Cajun.
Absolutely, and again, I mean, look, at the end of the, I get it. I mean, no one likes to be in a deficit spending situation down the road. So that's something we could continue to work on, fine-tune the forecast and, you know, continue to monitor expenses and recommend we can make some changes in the future, but I wanted to throw that out. One other big thing I want to note real quick is, there's a large bus need, obviously, and so we did include a few bus purchases per year, and that was not in the November forecast. So we did include that in this forecast. Looking at the PI fund, you know, does it bring in enough for all the district maintenance needs? And that's, that's...
The answer is no, it does not.
Right, and I totally agree with that. So that's where, you know, either we're not going to buy the buses, or we should at least plan on, you know, looking at it down the road potentially. So we wanted to put that in the forecast to have that flexibility.
All right, we have, need a motion for the approve the consent agenda.
Did he put it forward, the consent? Did he ask for approval on?
What's on the agenda is a consent.
We didn't do the other...
Yeah, you didn't do the other things.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I kind of skipped to the meat there, sorry. So I have the meeting of the previous minutes there from May 9th to May 2nd of 2022. Availability of funds for some then-and-nows listed.
Tammy wasn't present at one of those meetings, so can we pull it out?
She wasn't?
Not the special meeting.
Oh, the one to approve the field trip.
Yeah, just that one quick thing, so we can't do this on a consent. Maybe we could just pull that one, May 2nd meeting out?
The May 2nd, yeah.
Maybe we do that as like, I don't know, 5.6? Okay, so, I move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 5.1 through 5.4 as amended.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Colewell?
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalec?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
So then, just so I'm clear, 5.6 is going to be the minutes from the May 2nd meeting.
So I'll move approval on 5.6.
I'll second. Any discussion? Colewell?
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalec?
All right, Dr. Marley, we are back with you.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. I recommend item 6.1, which is an overnight field trip that was board-approved on March 2nd, how, or March 7th, rather. We have one additional qualified student that will attend the event on May 7th, 2022, and is being added to the list. And this is for the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Lewisville, Kentucky, on June 11th through June 17th.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Just to clarify on that, the public content is not as accurate as the executive content. We actually have, we have six students attending, those six are all the executive content. We also have two staff members chaperoning. I think it says we have five and one on the public content, just want to make sure that was clear. So, they're all good to go, I just want to make sure that was accurate.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavalec?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Thank you. I am recommending item 6.2, the appointment of Brittany Robbins as an Assistant Principal for Hillview and Maplewood Elementary.
I'll move for approval, item 6.2.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, actually, I would like to have a little discussion. I, Dr. Marley and I have had many conversations about the Assistant Principals. I am very reluctant, I do know that we have a need for Assistant Principals in our elementary schools, but I think we have a lot of needs, like, so I'm, I'm struggling with all these, so I just want you all to know that this is not having anything to do with any particular person, but this is a struggle for me, you know, seeing the forecast, what we're looking at with salaries and needs inside, you know, buildings and classrooms that, you know, we're visiting, the struggles that students have had over the last couple of years in needing, you know, smaller classes and, you know, maybe more services. So, I'm having a lot of heartburn about this, so that's my discussion on that.
Thank you.
I just have to echo what Julie said, and as I, these concerns predated any interview process, please understand that. This has nothing to do with any individuals that are in the room at all, it's just concerns about finances and where our money is best placed.
Thank you. I think what my comments are, I think our team has been quite thorough. And first, let me say thank you for your honesty and your transparency, because it's important, as we run a school district, to understand that sometimes we are not going to see everything eye to eye and have different perspectives, and that's why you are board members. So I respect your honesty and to put it on the record, as going so, to have reluctance. I will say, in working with our team and working with administrators and teachers, we do feel that it is a need, and it's not the only need, quite frankly. I think if you have an opportunity, we shared our rationale and maybe to revisit, but I do know that in talking with teachers, educators, administrators, we're seeing different needs that are coming through our school doors than what we've had. We have made sure that if adjustments need to be made in regards to the financial piece, we have off-ramps in place. We have to right-size in some areas. With every position that moves forward, we need to ask ourselves, is this a position we've always had, and we need to continue that position? Maybe yes, maybe no, or does it need to look differently? We also know that as we have folks retire, we have folks that we hire that are newly brought on board that are at lower salaries because they have less experience. I think the thing that I would advocate for is, as I walk in buildings and I'm listening to teachers and realizing, these new elementary administrative positions are to serve as a support to our educators, our children, and our families. When one evaluation for an elementary principal or any principal in the district takes three hours to complete per staff member, it's not of the days when you have MCR, where you walk in, sit down, you fill out a form, and then you're out. The state has put new conditions in place for teacher evaluations. I've heard teachers that have expressed, you know, they've had an hour meeting with their building principal for a pre-conference, the principal comes in to sit down to complete an evaluation, and then a child has a need, and the principal has to go for the safety of other children in the building and the safety of that child. I think having support for teachers and educators where they have another person to go to in time of need, in time of crisis, or in time of celebration. I think coverage for our elementary buildings, instead of scrambling for a substitute, we now have some built-in substitutes for our administrators, because we have not had that in the past. So consistency for our administrative team and teachers, our teachers will have folks that they can rely on, that are part of our administrative team. And even more importantly, our core business is teaching and learning. And sometimes, being a principal, regardless at any level you serve, it's like being an emergency room doctor. You go to work every day and you never know what you're going to get, but you got to be there and you have to fix everything, right? You got to adhere or at least address every need. And I think these new positions will allow our administrators and our teachers to focus on our core business, which is teaching and learning, more than what we've been able to do in the past. I think when we can talk about using data as a flashlight and not a hammer, when I hear that we have children and staff who need a point person because children are struggling with anxiety and counselors are overwhelmed, we need more support for our teachers and our students and our families. And I will say, I think, and still recommend confidently, that this is the right move. And I understand reluctance, but, I won't say but, I will say I understand reluctance and I also understand fiscal responsibility and I understand what it looks like when you have a runner that's six years old in a building and doesn't know how to express why they are upset, but everything comes to a halt. So it's not a debate of right or wrong, I think it's a different opinion and the financial responsibility, but I have shared with all of you, even in previous conversations, we have off-ramps built in to our forecast.
When you say off-ramps, like, are you saying off-ramps where these positions won't exist anymore?
Not necessarily, no, no. It's across the board, we have off-ramps. Again, it goes back to doing an analysis of where we are, what we have, and why we do what we do, and looking at every position and saying, do we still need that position? Does that position still need to be part-time? Some positions, we have reorganized or repurposed to look differently, because it's perhaps not the fit of what our staff and our students need moving forward. But I think if we have a teacher or an administrator or an OC staff member that we say, why do we still have this position? Do we need to look at that differently? Will it cost us less money? Can we look at how we have that work divvied up? A different way to slice the pie in order to keep us financially sound.
Yeah, and, and you know, okay, you said a lot of stuff right there, and now...
It's all of it.
Yeah, 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 but I'm just going to say, like, each, you know, section, I was like, okay, I would have this for that, but then it was buildings, so I'm not, I'm not going to remember all of it. Again, I get that our, you know, our building administrators wear 27 hats and they do 100 things in a day and are, I mean, they're incredible. I get that, and everybody can use more support. Like, that's not a question. For the years that I've been sitting at this table, I have believed that several of our elementary schools absolutely needed an assistant, because they were larger than our junior high schools. And so there's, like, I'm not arguing any of that, but at the same time, there are even more after the last two years, needs that students have also, like, you would never see me having reluctance at more counselors, social workers, which we should talk about, or, you know, some, especially in some of our buildings, lower class sizes, where these kids are really struggling. That's, because I don't think we're getting many of those things right now. And I know, because you and I have talked about it 15 different times, about, you know, these assistant principals, you know, are a help. The feedback I have gotten from teachers is that they needed different things, other things. They're not saying this isn't important. I don't think anybody would say that, that it's not important, but that there are other needs that are maybe not being met, and that's where I'm having heartburn.
Well, and I think it, again, is an and. I mean, when we have worked with SEA and worked with teachers and staff to say that we need agencies in our community that are going to give more intensive support to our families and our children, we are working with Beyond Healthcare to bring that to fruition. We have added a behavior specialist to come in into our, in our, each of our buildings, where we have, we don't have the tools to address some of the needs, so we've hired a behavior specialist to give our teachers support, to say, this is the child's behavior, please come in and observe, please come in and give me some help, because it's beyond the expertise of a school counselor or a school psychologist. So we have partnered with those agencies. I don't see it perhaps, well, quite frankly, I see it as an and, because it is important, and we've, we've discussed how we can bring in special ed units to our district to really meet the needs of some of our children who need outplacement and the price associated with paying an agency to do that, or to also bring that and we can run it and subcontract it with our own funding through special ed. I think when we've talked about the social worker piece and we are moving down that road, we have to have a social worker.
100%, and maybe more than one.
Absolutely.
Because I did get some feedback in the community from a social worker who saw our posting and contacted me and said, what you are expecting a social worker to do, you're asking way too much for, you know, what the salary is. She said, that's way too much, we can talk about this later, and said, maybe you need to meet with her, because that's not something I know about. But, but then I, for instance, you know, Greg and I met with you after we met with some teachers in one of our buildings who have data, who brought us data and said, here's our issue, right, and here's what we need. And I don't know, that's been a couple of weeks, and I don't know what the outcome of that was. You know, are, are we fixing that? Are we giving them what they need?
Well, I think that's a two-pronged approach, because I think, one, I said that we would make a decision in June, because we had other variables that we needed to consider. So for example, when we speak about supporting our individuals who are English learners, and that's one of the variables that we're looking at, how do we resolve? If I pulled 12 kids out of a classroom, or we pulled 12 students out of a classroom that are non-English speaking and give them the services that they need, direct instruction, that potential fourth grade classroom may have 12 less students in it because those students aren't there. They're being taught in a different classroom to meet their needs. Because right now, when we've heard that same feedback from our teachers, it is a challenge to have a gifted student in a classroom, your typical student in a classroom, a student with special needs in your classroom, and then a student that doesn't speak English, understand English, and the translator app doesn't work really well, because it doesn't always get it right. So before we can say with absolute certainty, like, yeah, we're going to pull off and add another teacher, we want to make sure we're adding the right teacher, because the right teacher maybe is an ESL teacher, so we can pull those 12 kids out of your classroom, or those eight students out of the classroom, because right now, we feel, as a team and talking with teachers, we can do a better job in providing services for that specific population. I will tell you, preschool is another population that we're having to look at and make adjustments. And many things did not exist 10 years ago the way they do now. Some of these variables didn't exist five years ago, some of these variables didn't exist two years ago. There are student needs, there are staff needs, and again, I see it as a collection of, there's a number of things we need to address. I've committed to small class sizes when I came here. I added teachers last year when I was at a staff meeting at Whiteford, and a teacher said, we have 43 students that are ESL, came back to my office, let some support over there. I'm always about adding support for our children, but I also think it's a multifaceted approach. I can add a classroom teacher, but it's also what's being taught and how things are being taught. And we may need more of an ESL classroom teacher than a classroom teacher.
And I think you know this, but I'm going to just say this, since this is being recorded, all of my, you know, reluctance and my heartburn over this and all that, and you and I have disagreed on other things, I do know that you are making recommendations, I'm not saying this for you, because I know you know, and I'm saying it for everybody else. I do know that you're making recommendations based on what you feel is best. I do, I do know that you're making recommendations based on what you feel is best for the district and for students, and I understand. I do know that. That doesn't mean I'm always comfortable with the recommendation, but I know what your intention is.
Well, and you know, Ms. Hoffman, I, I respect you for that because there were, there are other districts and other folks that wouldn't handle it that way. So thank you because I think that's why we are a Board of Education and why we come to this format, to share those thoughts and to make sure we're, we're being clear with our community and with our employees.
Jill. I would just like to add my two cents. I'm listening to all this. I, I understand what's being said, what I'm hearing and what I've heard in my time on the board is that yes, times are different, obviously, now than they were five, 10 years ago. But what I'm hearing, almost at every level, the different people we've had in to do presentations, et cetera, is that many times the classrooms are in a state of crisis management. You cannot effectively do anything if you're always in a crisis management mode. I see the addition of the assistant principals, settling down that crisis management, hopefully eliminating it as much as possible on a daily basis. If that is eliminated or at least toned down significantly, it seems to me that teachers are going to be more effective teaching. Students are going to be more effective learning. I can't imagine being a teacher in that kind of environment and trying to do my lesson plans, trying to get the kids to learn, and I can't imagine being a kid, whether it's elementary or high school, trying to learn in that sort of an environment. That has to be absolutely the most distracting environment that you could imagine and still expect me to teach or me to learn. It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen, I don't think, to the degree that Sylvania has a reputation of being a great school district. You're going to lose that somewhere. If you have people stressed to their max, kids acting out because they don't know what else to do, they don't know how to explain, as you said, they don't know how to explain why I'm angry, why I'm mad at Tammy because she, you know, stole my book this morning or they're just acting out because they're mad, they're angry, they're hurt, whatever. They didn't get breakfast that morning. They don't get breakfast half the mornings maybe at home. Or there's an argument between mom and dad, and I know I'm going on and on. So let me hone it back in. I think we need to look at also the angle of crisis management and trying to do something about crisis management in the classrooms because again, it starts with the kids and that's what is going to affect the most, I think, is the kids and the teachers if they don't have to teach or try and learn under those circumstances. And that's where I think the addition of the assistant principals, and we're not adding a full-time one to every building, some are half-time here, half-time there, which I think will also give us an idea, is that enough? Or do we need to look at increasing how many days a week? Let's start with what we think we need instead of starting with the moon, which I think we're doing, and then assess it for both. Is it too much? Is it not enough? Is it helping the problem? Is it not? We're not going to know whether this is 100% the priority right now, but it seems to be. And it seems like it's going to affect things below that and lateral to that.
I just kind of want to piggyback on what everybody said. You know, I definitely have the same concerns as Julie and Tammy, and we've talked about the financial impact. But on the, on the same token, I do agree with Jill that our buildings need support. And it's my hope that adding the support to the buildings will allow our, you know, teachers to have that support so they can educate our students. You know, in tying this in with our five-year forecast, the one thing that gives me a little bit of comfort is in five years from now, we're projected at the same cash balance we have now. So I do think we have time to make adjustments, take a look. If, if, you know, something needs to change, we have time to take a look at that. So that's one thing that gives me a little bit of comfort is we are in a good position and even though, you know, our, our five-year forecast doesn't look great in year four and five, we do still have the cash balance we have now. So that gives me a little bit of comfort with that.
And I've shared with Dr. Motley, I was comfortable adding three. It was the additional two that I wanted to wait. I had hoped to wait until we had a full-time treasurer on board who could have a better opportunity to evaluate our financial situation in a year. I will vote for everyone today. I'm going to tell you that just because I don't think it's fair to the people you've already talked to and because I value your recommendation. I just have to, I just had to express my concerns.
I appreciate that, as you should. And I think on a final note, I appreciate that you trust our team's recommendation and my recommendation. I know that the board was quite comfortable with providing support with our three large buildings. And one of the things that we've tried to bring to the table are work roles. How are we going to do our work moving forward? The caveat to our elementary buildings is that some of our smaller buildings have the greatest needs when you look at the students who are attending those buildings. They have high, low economic status numbers. They have higher mobility. They have larger numbers in EL learners. They just have different needs. And so work roles don't always, aren't precise, but it is a start. Our preschool is going to continue to grow. It is projected to continue to grow. We still need a site for preschools. As this evolves, it may be one of these administrators becomes a preschool coordinator because the preschool is growing at the rate it is. We have needs for our out-of-district placement. Still trying to figure out how we can incorporate that. And when I say out-of-district placements, we have a number of students who are on IEPs that actually attend private schools that require they have a district rep from our district. We are still working to provide support for those students because they are Sylvania residents. It is a multi-pronged approach, multifaceted approach, and we will continue to have conversations and we will continue to update you, to provide you feedback because it's not a one-and-done opportunity. It's important that we continue to have the conversation, that you can hear from our employees, our students, our teachers, our families with the impact of these roles across the district. I will tell you, I am confident that we will all see the benefit, but I also know that it requires that I come back to the table with our team and share the positive impact. So thank you for your honesty.
Because it'll definitely be a positive impact. I mean, putting more support.
I don't.
Yeah, putting more support is.
I don't. And the right impact. Because we, our folks want to be instructional leaders. They want to focus on teaching and learning. They also want to focus on the social emotional needs of our students. And quite frankly, sometimes the smaller schools like ours, they have some really significant needs that if I could do an algorithm, you would see that sometimes one kiddo can check off three or four boxes. It's, it's, it's a lot of work, but we will do it together. And again, this is just the first of how we are going to continue, well, really not the first, because we've been doing other things with, again, Beyond Healthcare to support our students and our teachers as well. We will continue to do what we need to do to meet the needs of our children. These are unique times and I think you're going to continue, I know you're going to continue to see other things on our board agenda that you will approve that will support our students and our teachers and our families. So thank you.
Katie, do we have a motion?
Yeah, a second, yeah.
Do we have a motion, second for 6.2? Okay, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
And before we move on to the next item, Mr. Feller, I would like to tell everyone a little bit about Brittany. Brittany, congratulations. I know you were hired here in 2010 at Hillview. I know that your father is also a former administrator here in our district and actually, if I recall, you are a graduate of Sylvania Schools. Let me get it right. We interviewed our few? Yay. I will let you know that Brittany has served as a physical education teacher in our district as well as a school counselor for the past six years, where she has served at Timberstone. And I know her son was here tonight, your whole family kind of disappeared on you, but...
He was having, that was a lot of patience.
That was a lot of patience.
He had to go to his T-ball.
Oh, that's important. That's a priority. I will say though, I had the pleasure of seeing Brittany at Timberstone's information night and when she heard it was the class of 2035, I do believe, she kind of shook her head and was like, really that long? But welcome to the team. I know your expertise in working with our students and also working as a school counselor will benefit our buildings and our staff. So thank you.
And maybe with your dog.
What's that?
Do you still have the dog?
He belongs to Timberstone.
Yeah.
Doesn't get to go with you?
No, he's.
I think of him as your dog, so.
He is. He'll be, he'll still stay with us from time to time, but he's Timberstone. So thank you, Dr. Motley, and the board. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.3, the appointment of Kelly Kohler as an assistant principal for Sylvan and Whiteford Elementary.
A move for approval of item 6.3?
One second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Just a word for everybody who may be watching and for everyone in the room. Kelly Kohler is joining us actually from Champaign, Illinois, where she is currently a assistant and assistant principal at Edison Middle School, and she comes with a special education background, has a lot of experience with working with some challenging behaviors and a challenging population. So we look forward to her joining our team and bringing her experience and expertise to our table. So congratulations, Kelly. We were going to have her face up there, but we thought that would look a little bit Next, I recommend Mr. Nathan Bledst as assistant principal of Highland Elementary.
A move of approval.
A second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
While Nathan is here with his wife this evening, welcome Nathan.
I'm a little mad at Nathan.
Nathan is just wrapping up his 15th year in Toledo Public Schools. He was a high school social studies teacher until he became the assistant principal at Arlington Elementary. And I have to tell you, Nathan shared a special story with his, in his final round interview, I believe it's nicknamed by one of his students, was Mr. Beloved. And that student has gone on to do great things, although she started out somewhat at risk, but she is now a traveling RN, if I recall.
Making big bucks.
Wow, so, thank you so much. Next, I recommend item 6.5, the appointment of Kelly George, or Kimberly George, as an assistant principal of Central Trail Elementary.
A move of approval. A second. Discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. And a little bit about Kim, you have been in our district, well, you started in Mason in 2004. I have my cheat sheet, I didn't memorize all that stuff. But she has served as our student affairs coordinator split between Sylvan and Central Trail since 2019, and she also has a special ed background. She has worked with students that have been identified with needs that are moderate intense and mild to moderate intervention. So welcome. I know you're already at Central Trail and they are thrilled to have you there full-time every day. So welcome to, back to the Central Trail team.
Thanks, I was excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 6.6, I recommend the appointment of Amanda Ogrin as assistant principal of Stranahan Elementary School.
A move of approval.
A second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Thank you. And just to tell you, even though Amanda isn't joining us tonight, she's been the principal at McCord and Central Trail. She's also served as an intervention specialist and a transition to work coordinator. I didn't know that for the Penta Career Center. So she was also a special education supervisor for Lucas County, and she is excited, she says, to go back to her roots as an assistant principal to do what she loves. So congratulations to Amanda. And I also have appointment, or item number 6.7, the appointment of Melissa McDonald as director of student support services here in Sylvania Schools.
A move of approval. A second. Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Congratulations. Melissa has served as building principal at Arbor Hills Junior High for five years, where she also worked as assistant principal under Mr. Zieroff. She said her twitch went away though, if I recall. Just playing. But she has joined Northview, I think in 2011, if my data is correct. She's also served as an assistant principal of pupil personnel at Wade High School in Toledo. She served as a hearing officer as well and started as an English teacher. So she's familiar with the work that will take place in the student service or student support services. We've kind of re-engineered that department to be a year-round department to support our families when they register and to have someone here that can help with our EL population. She will also be working with our school counselors and our social worker and all things wrap around for our students here in Sylvania Schools. So congratulations, Melissa. We are glad to have you here at 4747. We know you're going to continue to do great work.
Thank you, I'm very excited to have you.
Moving on, I recommend item 6.8 is an agreement with Focus 3 LLC. This is a professional organization that we would like to contract with in order to provide district leadership development, and it will be funded through Title II federal monies.
A move of approval.
A second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.9. This is an annual technical services agreement between our Board of Education and the Northern Buckeye Educational Council, Northwest Ohio Computer Association. That's a mouthful. But this is an annual agreement as we work with Nowaka for our technical support in the district.
A move of approval.
A second.
Are these the same cost-wise as similar to?
Yes.
Last year?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.10. It is a policy revision for a second read for extracurricular slash co-curricular drug testing.
A move of approval.
A second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. LaVella?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Thank you. And our last item is item 6.11. It is an addendum to our board agenda. It is a MOU in order for us to hire a high school PE and health teacher for the 22-23 school year.
A move of approval. A second.
I have a question. When did this get added on? Because it wasn't here when I looked at the agenda.
Actually, this morning.
Okay. In the future, if they're, if they're going to change the agenda, can you like send us a text or something?
Sure.
So that we know to look at it before we get here?
Absolutely.
Because I checked the agenda Friday when it comes out.
Okay.
I mean.
It's a good idea. Thank you.
Huh?
Said chill off.
Do you not read the agenda before you get here?
I don't necessarily read it Friday.
Okay, but you read it before you get?
Yes.
Yes.
We can start like that.
So, I'm just saying, like, do I need to start...
But it was on there when I read it.
Do I need to start reading it at like 5:30 on Monday? I just like a heads up if something changed.
I appreciate that, absolutely.
Because I didn't know until I sat down here, and then I was like, what is this? I swear this wasn't on here.
Your swearing was right.
And this is one teacher split between the schools?
Three periods at Northview and three periods at Southview.
I don't know if it's an even split. I have the assistant principals' work because they might have been a heavier need at one building versus the other, so it's going to meet the needs at both buildings with the idea that we're not going to close those kids out of PE.
So, what's the net effect at each school, do you know?
Casey was confirming it with me this afternoon. I haven't got back because he's got to confirm it was there at the, it might be a 4-2 or a 5-1. I don't believe it's 3-3.
It's not a 3-3.
So, it's not...
Because that was the question. My email was, my last communication was 3-3.
Yeah, because of the...
Person being at more.
Yeah, the question I asked the other day was, is this even split?
So, they don't do the 3-3, and then when they were going through the MOU, there were some problems with, or voting on the MOU because the numbers were skewed one way versus the other. So, I even replied back to Dan during the MOU conversation with SEA that what we're looking for, the one-year PE ad, with the goal that we're only committing to it for a year, and the goal is that we're not going to close kids out of PE at each building. So, again, I confirmed with Casey, and today he's going to confirm with Sarah to find out what that actual split is, because we're going to have to bid that appropriately.
So, it's not a 3-3, so it might be like a net gain for Northview of five and one section for Southview.
It's one total add, but it might not be 3-3 even split.
So, it's not even, it might not be, or it's not evenly split?
He hasn't confirmed that with me yet.
Do you have a sense of which school it might be?
Northview's going to be skewed heavy. There's more need at Northview than Southview, I do know that.
And this is because there's more kids that need to take PE?
Correct. At Northview than Southview.
And this is just for one year?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, call the roll.
Mrs. Lavale?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
I do have a question since we're leaving you.
Certainly.
I do not recall approving all the graduates for graduation. Did we do that?
I do not have those names yet. In fact, I think an email came across this weekend that the names are not ready. I don't know if it's because we're still, I don't know the details.
Is it graduation like next week?
I agree. I have not received those names.
So, we're not going to approve our graduates before graduation?
We may have to do a special meeting for that, because I have not received...
Wait, just so I understand this, so, our principals at the high schools, our assistant principals, whoever, building, don't know who's graduating yet? I mean, seniors are done at school.
I understand. I will have to dig deeper into that.
How many? Oh, Amy!
Well, I always go because we put the names in Slovenian Advantage.
Yeah.
And there are still seniors taking exams this week, and that is being put together all this entire week. I always told I can't get into the Advantage this first edition, so I know that they're still excited. That's what I know.
We have, we have someone talk to both principals today that will come down to the $11 on Thursday based on, based on absences for exams that they needed to pass those classes to earn the 22 credits, et cetera. So, attendance is the big piece for that, so...
I'm just surprised because in the 12 years I've been sitting here, we've never not approved the graduates, you know, in the...
Prior to graduation.
The meeting before gradu, you know, graduation. So, what's the difference this year? What's the, I don't understand what, so we're going to need a special meeting to, I mean, which I'm fine with because I want the kids to graduate, but...
Yeah. Yeah, we will probably need a special meeting.
And we, we have to approve that list before graduation?
Yeah, I don't remember approving it last year, but I could just be...
Oh, no, we approve it every year. Every year we approve it before graduation, usually the meeting before the end of the school year. Oh, yeah, we did. Yeah, you guys can escape.
Thank you. Thank you.
Every year.
I know we approved them last year.
I just, I don't understand why this year is different than any other year. Yeah, just go back to the last meeting each year in May. You'll see, all the names on there.
I know, I can't, I generally don't have them until after exams are done because... Exams are still going on this week.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm just saying, every year we've always had them.
Do we usually have a meeting like right after exams, right before graduation?
I think it was, last year it was on the regular meeting, if I recall.
I mean, it's always...
No, no, it was one of our regular meetings scheduled for that purpose.
Right, yeah, I mean, maybe it's that, I mean, it doesn't say that for us, but it's just like, here are the graduates, and it's sometime in May, you know, not even necessarily the last meeting, it could be the first meeting in May, but we always see...
So, you approve them even though they might not be confirmed for graduation?
Listen, I don't know the rules, I'm just saying. It comes before us, we approve it, and I suppose somebody can not make it, or maybe it's like Cajun said, you know, pending.
You approve everybody.
Yeah.
Pending requirements met?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
It's a good question.
Approve it retroactively, because I don't think we meet again before graduation.
We don't.
I don't see it on May 24th of last year.
I don't see it on June 14th.
I'm not sure we ever approved them at all.
All right, there it is. It was approved June 14th last year.
We did, it was after graduation.
I know we approved them.
I feel like we had this conversation last year.
Yeah.
All right, so then that would have been the first year.
Yeah. And I think historically, while I know this for personal reasons, because of the Northview Boosters Golf outing, always falls the Tuesday after Memorial Day. And if you played in that, you've done it, you have to rush over here to get to a board meeting. So, I think last year was one of the first meetings, first times you didn't have to rush over. And we probably approved it that Tuesday before the graduation took place that Sunday. And based on the change in our, in our meeting dates, last year was first year that we probably did it after the fact.
Was it on June 14th?
It was on June 14th last year, but...
I'm looking, I don't even see it on there.
It's 5.2.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah.
Still should be ahead of time. Did they change their exam schedule or something, where they have kids going up through...
No, most seniors don't take exams.
Prior to...
Yeah, most seniors don't take exams.
They're done. So, this is makeups.
If they have poor attendance, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or a really bad...
Yeah. We have teachers, credit teachers who give them, even though the seniors' last days already come and gone, they give them that opportunity before they get into the actual school year to try and get over the hump, so...
Okay. I don't remember where we are now.
All right, we are with Human Capital.
Josh.
I am asking for approval on a consent agenda basis for items 7.1 and items 7.3 through 7.5.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 through, and 7.3 through 7.5. Now you can explain what they are. Sorry, sorry, you were doing that. How do you?
Well, we can just go, I can, allow me to go through them?
I'll, yeah.
Okay, 7.1 are licensed summer school PE teachers. 7.3 is one licensed, or a couple licensed resignations. 7.4 are licensed extra duty.
I'm still in 2021, I'm sorry.
Sorry. And then 7.5 are licensed stipends.
I get it. All right.
So, we've got a motion, right?
I need a second.
I'll second. Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Feller?